Someone answer that phone, it's driving me crazy.
I bet you're out.
Good man. That's a military man, get it done.
You have an extra fifty cents.
He can't hit her.
Every time?
I'm not gonna say every time.
Yeah, I know the last one is...
Maybe it was just the last one. I just remember it. It could have been just some, some...
Yeah, I'm not sure, I just come here and... I don't know anything about baseball, I just watch baseball.
Welcome to being... Nineteen? Too far off.
But hopefully it works.
It's fine, and it could have been... It could have been just someone videoing it on Facebook, you know what I mean? Like there was a Facebook, on Facebook. But what's the best way to watch on Facebook?
Um, Arkhamas.
Arkhamas.
The website.
So Google Arkhamas.
I just noticed you're on Arkhamas. I'm seeing your video, and if you could call the radio station, they know, and they could tell you exactly what's going on.
It's a coffee. You know, I'm from the nineties. Have you ever heard of something? It's a fun app, ready? If you know this song. Then I'll call. Tell them. I gotta school you right back. I gotta school you right.
No, make it work for you.
But she's a... Just go. Not that you want it.
Look at that picture. I don't have any views.
I won't say it, okay? That's on your social media page.
Get it though, it's hard to get it done. Work time.
Yeah, people do it.
Hey, what's happening, bro?
How are you?
Ladies and gentlemen, it's five minutes to five. I've got a couple of wayward council members that are coming into the phone. And, well, there's a few of them out there. So we're gonna... As we do, we're gonna start with a prayer and pledge. Tonight, I've asked Reverend Anthony Trailer, a long-term employee of the city, and a good friend of the city, to lead us in prayer. So, Brother Trailer?
Right, let's pray. First, as far as we found it, I don't know how, say thank you to the state. God would just praise you. Allow us to be here one more time, Jesus. I move my knees to sign, come pray, and that this council, God, that you are just an American, and it's our cabinet, and it's good city, but everything is done decent and all. You get to pray to the Lord and end it, and God has been praying, special prayer, to Bishop Callaway. As you were speaking to him, we'd build him up and say, this kind of chap now, make him stronger today. He ever been then, God, who prayed for this entire congregation. God would just say that you give us heaven, and he's made a saint, and he was here, and Jesus saved him. Pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is the nation's for government, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I would like to call this meeting to order. We're running just a few minutes early, so probably have a few folks coming in. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We do not have an extensive agenda, and hopefully everything is poignant. Madam Clerk?
David Hurst.
Here.
Frank Cash.
Present.
Vance Williamson.
Here.
Judy Ward.
Here.
Willie McGee.
Present.
George Callaway. Betty McAdams.
Here.
And Diane Hammond.
Here.
You should have before you, and have had opportunity to peruse, the minutes from February the eleventh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Willie McGee. Betty McAdams.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
And David Hurst.
Aye.
Okay, new business. Item number five, on your agenda, we have the appointment to the planning and zoning commission of David Painsworth. And I believe at the bottom of your stack, you'll find his application to that particular commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Betty McAdams.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Okay, we are two within ordinance. It is a sanitation rate increase ordinance. You should have that in your package.
Or motion.
And... Yes, please. Oh, okay, yes, we do need to read the ordinance, thank you.
Whereas garbage rates were last increased October twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-six, and whereas the rates need to be increased to cover the increased cost of providing services, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Elrata, Arkansas, that section one ordinance, fifteen forty-nine, passed October twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-six, is repealed. Section two, garbage rates attached tier-two and marked as exhibit A are hereby adopted in the City of Elrata. Section three, is therefore declared that an emergency exists, and this ordinance being necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety shall be in force and take effect immediately from and after its passage.
May I agree that we put this on second reading by title, won't we?
Second.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
George Callaway. I'm sorry. Betty McAdams.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
And David Hurst.
Aye.
An ordinance for sanitation rate increase.
Motion could be gone third reading, by title, won't we?
Second.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
Vance Williamson. Judy Ward.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Betty McAdams.
Aye.
And Willie McGee.
Aye.
An ordinance for sanitation rate increases.
Second.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
Betty McAdams.
Aye.
And Vance Williamson.
Aye.
And we have a resolution.
I am waiting for emergency.
Pardon me.
Second.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
Betty McAdams.
Aye.
And Vance Williamson.
Now, we have a resolution in here waiving requirement for competitive bidding.
A resolution waiving the requirements of competitive bidding, whereas from time to time is necessary in the best interest of the City of Elrata to waive the requirements of competitive bidding. And whereas Arkansas Code Annotated, Section fourteen fifty-eight, three oh three, B two B, states that the City Council by resolution may waive the requirements of competitive bidding as provided in Arkansas Code Annotated fourteen dash fifty-eight dash one oh four. Whereas Arkansas Code Annotated fourteen dash fifty-eight, one oh four, eleven A, provides that the City Council may purchase used or second-hand motor vehicles without soliciting bids. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Elrata, Arkansas, that the requirements of competitive bidding are hereby waived as to the purchase of a used nineteen ninety-five Ford bucket truck described in the attached exhibit A.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, yes, sir.
I just wanna ask a question. So, this is just to, um, like vehicles. Does this go for all bidding?
Now, this is specific to the nineteen ninety-five Ford bucket truck. Yeah, yeah, questions? Be used by the street department for service of traffic lights, Christmas, you know, helping with Christmas decorations and lighting.
Betty McAdams.
Aye.
Vance Williamson. Willie McGee.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Next is the part I know that our city has been sitting there with bated breath waiting for. We have a resolution for condemnation. I believe there are fifty... five properties on this particular schedule.
Whereas there are numerous dwellings in the City of Elrata that are public nuisances said locations and owners being more particularly, particularly described as followed to with street address thirteen thirty-one and thirteen thirty-three East Cook. Owner Bobby Dean Dixon. Thirteen twenty-seven, East Cook, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address ten thirteen East Faulkner. Owner Oyama Williams. Three eighteen Marable Hill, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated. Street address four oh one Florence. Owner Oyama Williams. Three eighteen Marable Hill, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address five twenty-one Carrion. Owner Cassandra Ross. Fifty-six seventy-one High Creek Drive, Dallas, Texas. Reason for removal dilapidated, burned. Street address ten nineteen Harrison. Owner Three L Men Managing Money LLC. Twenty-six Union, or two sixty Union Road, six eighty-nine, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address eleven two North Miles. Owner Three Men, Three L Men Managing Money LLC. Two sixty Union Road, six eighty-nine, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address eleven fifteen East Smith. Owner Teresa McGalton, E.O. Box. One zero two four four, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address eleven twelve East Oak. Owner Lee Kilgore. Eleven oh four North Parkway, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address three fifteen and five oh three Kiner. Owner Paula Jones. Sixteen fifteen West Hunley Street, Hoffman, Illinois. Reason for removal dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address five hundred Kiner. Owner Beverly Dane, Kirrods Center. Sandra Hall. Four twenty Christian Drive, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address four ten Kiner. Owner Jesse Morton, four ten Kiner, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address ten twenty Taylor. Owner Cindy Nixon, E.O. Box, twenty-two fifty, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address eleven oh four East Western. Owner Gloria Bradford. Twelve thirteen West First Street, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, obnoxious, untamented. Street address ten sixteen Taylor. Owner Randy Holmes. Eleven forty-two Missawell Road. Austin, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe. Street address thirteen sixteen D Avenue. Owner Henderson Management. Fourteen thirty-six Mount Holly Road, Smackover, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, burned. Twelve nineteen East Cedar. Owner Gladys Gilbert. Seven eleven E.M.B., Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address fourteen hundred North Miles. Owner Linda Braggs. Fourteen hundred North Miles, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, burned. Street address thirteen thirteen East Wilson. Owner Alicia Blueford and Dennis Ray Johnson. Eleven oh two East First, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address twenty-nine ten Junction C Road. Owner Vanita Beasley. One eight six one one Griggs, Detroit, Michigan. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address fifteen eleven East Avenue. Owner Brenda Norfolk. One twenty-six Whiver Tub Senior Drive, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address nine twenty-six and nine thirty Buchanan. Owner Walter Robinson. Four eighteen Maple Hill Drive, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address thirteen oh three Roosevelt. Owner Elsie Parker. Thirteen oh three Roosevelt, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address eleven twenty-five Maddox Lane. Owner Jimmy Ellison. Eleven twenty-five Maddox Lane, Elrata, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address twelve ten East Western. Owner Beanie George. Nine twelve Ortega Hill Lane, Cross Davis and Bottom. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Street address thirteen thirty-four North Miles. Owner Charles Harris. Thirty-eight oh one Smackover Drive, Little Rock, Arkansas. Reason for removal dilapidated, unsafe. Whereas Fire Marches and Code Enforced from the Bid for the City of Elrata, Arkansas, have determined that people of this dilapidated abating structures constitute a fire and health hazard and are unsightly or unsafe to abandon or neglect. The structures are deemed detrimental to the health and safety of the citizens of the City of Elrata. Said structures shall be declared nuisances and condemned by resolution of the City Council of the City of Elrata, Arkansas, and been removed pursuant to section seven, damage, three four one, et cetera, of the Code of Ordinances. Whereas the City of Elrata is given thirty days' notice to the owners listed above and attempted to notify owners by certified mail addressed to the last known address and compliance with state law and city ordinances within which said nuisances are to be removed by having mailed a true copy of these correspondence and posted for thirty days on said properties. If those houses with notices that have come back under deliverable, the structures may be removed immediately. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Elrata, Arkansas, that the houses at the addresses of the locations mentioned herein above be and hereby are condemned and declared to be nuisances to the City of Elrata, Arkansas, and authority to proceed to remove said nuisances is granted.
Do I have any further questions?
Second.
There is one correction on the spelling on number sixteen. Cedar should be C U D E R, I O, instead of C E I D E R.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
And Betty McAdams.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Edmonds, these removals are under contract. You're not having to do it, are you?
I agree.
Okay. Do you have any idea about how many have been able to get to, so we approve?
I think they've taken up probably fifteen.
Fifteen a month, you think?
Yes.
Okay.
Our next item is a resolution referencing Warner Brown.
Whereas MCSA LLC deconcerted property, commonly known as Warner Brown Hospital Complex, and more particularly described in the attached exhibit A to the City of Elrata, consistent with a disform of deed restriction limiting use of the property at the hospital, stipulating when the property was no longer used as a hospital, the property shall be as in the City of Elrata as its absolute property. Whereas the City of Elrata subsequently deeded the property, commonly known as Warner Brown Hospital Complex, more particularly described in the attached exhibit A to Warner Brown Building LLC. Whereas Warner Brown Building LLC's plans for the use and development of the property has changed, and it now intends to sell, shun, or alter the property. Whereas Resolution fourteen forty-eight approving the transfer of the property to Warner Brown Building LLC contained provisions in paragraph one that Warner Brown LLC would give a written report every quarter to the City Council and Mayor on progress of the work at the Warner Brown Complex. And in paragraph two, that this commitment was valid for a period of two years, subject to the diligent pursuit of redevelopment activities associated with the property, including master planning, architecture and engineering designs, environmental studies, hazardous material survey, hazardous material abatement activities, selective demolition, and other similar due diligence. Whereas therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Elrata, Arkansas, that one, the requirements contained in paragraph one and two, Resolution fourteen forty-eight of the City. The City of Elrata deems the deed restrictions were satisfied when MCSA LLC deeded the property to the City of Elrata. And the City of Elrata stated position as that it retains no ownership or originary interest in the property, commonly known as Warner Brown Hospital Complex, and more particularly described in the attached exhibit A.
Do I have any further questions?
I'm serving that.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
Betty McAdams.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
And David Hurst.
Aye.
Okay. Chief Hickman. Please come to the lightroom. I guess, business still, still.
I have three things, and I'll try to be quick. Don't want to slow it down too much. One thing is I wanted to ask the council's approval to temporarily add a dispatcher's physician in anticipation of the shortage of summoning. What we have is currently, we have one opening, but at the beginning of June, we have one that's expecting a child, one that will be retired. So, we can navigate one opening. When you get hit with a couple others, and then you'll have one that's in training, it could cause a little bit of difficulty. So if we could go ahead and hire two physicians, which is gonna be a wash in terms of the budget or even a gain overall throughout the year if you're replacing a person that's going to be retired and it's in the top end of the pay scale. And with one that's gonna be in the beginning pay scale, also we just have spent the last several months with that opening. So, it's not gonna be anything of a cost beyond the budget that I can perceive, and it would actually help to gain a little bit of overtime that would probably be necessary if we had it in June.
Yes.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Betty McAdams.
Aye.
Vance Williamson. Frank Cash.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
And David Hurst.
Aye.
And next, thank you, Mayor, for giving me an opportunity. Just, it's simply making some announcements, trying to get some word out. We have these posts on our Facebook page, we have a post on our website. I'll be doing an interview for the radio station next week. Ms. Theo was kind enough to sit down with me just the other day. We gave an interview with regard to upcoming things we have in the police department. We have our new hire testing, which is April third. We always are taking applications for certified officers, but new hires have to come in through the testing process through civil service, and that only happens twice a year, so that opportunity is upon us. All the information, I'm referring to our website, which is elderato police dot org. And we have, and it's linked there from their Facebook page, also to the website, give some more particulars. Another thing, it might be a little bit more of interest of some of the people here, because we have people here from retirees and the people that are interested in city business, and everything is... and everything is we have our Citizens Police Academy scheduled again beginning April eleventh, and the applications are due on the Wednesday prior to that. We take citizens through a nine-week course where we have one night a week on Tuesday nights, one six and nine, and one Saturday within that time, within that timeframe, where we basically teach people what we do and why we do it. And you have an opportunity of finding out information that's a little bit more accurate there, I say, on Facebook and YouTube about what the laws really are and what really happens and why we do what we do. You actually get to, you get a basis of law in the beginning and then you get to go through details with the detective division, with the narcotics division. We spend an afternoon or morning and an afternoon out at the firing range and we feed people lunch on that Saturday, we do that. And it just kind of takes people through a lot of things. We have live training, well, I say live, it's not fully live, you don't want anybody shooting back at you, but you have a big huge screen in front of you where you have a gun that actually you interact with, with a live-sized screen in dangerous situations and you get to find out how a split second determines the course of people's lives and how you can make a boo-boo and all. So it just helps people to walk in our shoes, but it's a lot of fun. And I think people will tell you, we have a couple here in the audience that have been through the classes before, and people will tell you that it's a worthwhile venture. We have a lot of fun over there. So I'm just trying to get the word out with that. It's one of the best ways that we get to know a lot of people that otherwise we don't see. And to be honest, it's probably a good thing for most people, you know, considering what we do. We get to meet them and kind of clear a little bit of fog that's out there about what police work is really like. So just kind of want to get the word out. Mayor, thank you, council, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
Before the chief gets away, does your department have a written policy about pursuit and...
We do.
That's what they do's and don'ts?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a copy of it, I don't know if the rest of the council would like to have one,
but... You absolutely can.
I would appreciate that.
You absolutely can. Matter of fact, that's one of the particular areas on our oral promotion interview, that's one of the selected...
I know we have a lot of new officers and I've observed some, what I thought were like some pretty hot pursuits or reactions, and I just wondered what the limitations on some of it is.
There are some. There are some. Yes, sir, you sure can.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving right along. Councilman McGee asked for the opportunity to report on his, on the three town hall meetings and...
Thank you. I really regret that Reverend Calloway isn't out here. Just basically, we had a nice meeting, I want to thank everybody that came, City Fisher, Mayor, Chief Molesby, Mr. Goddard, I had a great conversation. Some of the concern, basically, everybody already knows it because it's something that I talk about regular. One of the things that they was concerned about was lots and stuff. We had a lengthy discussion on that. Also talked about eighty-two project, how it's going to fit outside of town because sometimes the railroad track actually cuts off all three avenues that come on the other side of town, on the other side of the railroad track. It's actually going to be really interesting how that problem going to be solved because at one time we have had all three exits down about Budweiser, the newspaper, and down by the water come there and been blocked all at one time. So it's going to be kind of funny to see how we going to be able to solve that. Also, people was very concerned about the water, they was having some issues with water and flooding and lots. The mayor actually spoke on the lot issue that he had told Robert and them to make sure the lots and under the grass. But if, and me personally, I understand that kind of America, but we have to realize that we passed the ordinance that public works is really under the Water Utility Commission and in some kind of way, I just don't see how we can have a valid conversation at one place unless we have it at both places. Also, I truly think people need to truly be abreast and update when we have calls that call me, when people call me or call us, they count at the last end of their rope because they done had called other people. I truly think we need some type of way to monitor and get updates when city council called, like I called Robert or something, but somebody done called me by the water leak, I called John, John is very good, John Pepper is very good about calling me back and letting me know whether it's a ticket or something get to fall through the cracks. And us as city councilmen and city people, we don't actually ride every rule like city employees do. And I just truly think we could do better with that because when people call me and I call Robert or call whoever, I think I done got it to the proper place. Sometimes Robert have other things going on there, sometimes it slip through the cracks and then people call me like a month or two later and say, well, that never got done. I just think we could have a better system on reporting issues that when we call in or even when a citizen call in, have some type of tracking to let know that that got done, whether it's a return call or a decision to visit. Mr. Pepper is very good on that, maybe we need to take some lessons from him on calling back and saying, well, I got a ticket on that or the crew will be over there tomorrow. I just think we lose a lot, but it's really hard because Reverend Calloway was there and some other people was there. People was concerned also about the crime in our neighborhood. A lot of us agree that we could sit out on our back porch or patio at night and hear gunshot. We have a lot of homeless people that's literally wandered the street in Ward Three a lot. I don't know if other wards have that problem, but we actually trying to just come up with, giving the people a avenue where they can express, also let them know what's going on in our neighborhood like the eighty-two project. So I really think that we're going to have many more of them means and hopefully we can get the discussion where we all can kind of understand what's going on in Ward Three. But I really hope, and I know we already looking at, I know Chief Molesby said he was looking at alternative ways to get when eighty-two projects start. I just heard at the Chamber of Commerce that the utilities will be next year sometime, basically before they get finished. That's just the utilities alone, but meanwhile, we're going to do businesses and revenues and we're just going to have a lot of things going on. I just hope we just pay attention and be aware of what's going around in our community. And thank you again for coming, Mayor Cho.
You hit that.
Sorry.
We like five seconds back in your five minutes.
Hey, I also addressed that, since we get meet once a month, don't you take the time limit off of you? Since we meet once a month, we meet once a month.
We have, we have...
I understand, I'm just trying to throw it out there, you answered it. We meet once a month, once a month, sometimes.
I didn't set the rules, you set the rules.
No, I didn't set the rules, I'm just trying to point that out.
You did very well. And let me, can I just put a trailer on your comments?
Yes, sure.
It was an excellent meeting and there's several things that I've not had an opportunity to catch up with Bishop Calloway or you either one since, but we're going to have to talk about some things because I think we can make some improvements over there, sir. And I appreciate, I appreciate you, sir. Now, okay, the next thing on the agenda is me, and I know everybody came for this one, one thing here. Yes, well, you know, and I haven't seen anybody, so I'm going to, it's time for the state of the city and I'm going to try to keep it as brief as possible. And I'm going to, I'm going to be reading from my notes, so forgive me if it sounds like I've read this before. And I really truly am glad that most of the evening's group has remained for the final act of this evening. I guess you were expecting to hear great pearls of wisdom, folks, what you're going to get is pretty simple, pretty straightforward. You know, I'm me and I'll be me every day I'm in this office. So I want to express my appreciation to the city council. This is the third meeting of the year in the chambers and half of this council is new to this task. I mean, and all I can tell you is they're new to their roles and they're performing like seasoned veterans. They're doing an excellent job and I truly appreciate their professionalism. As you all know, the purpose of this address is to inform you as to where we are and the direction I believe we need to be moving toward. To maintain success, we need, as a city government, we need to continue to work together. We also need to support you, the citizens, we need your support from the citizens, we need your feedback, whether positive or otherwise, we need it. In a manner of speaking, you are our report card and we need this communication, we desire this communication. So feel free to pick up the phone and call. You know, I'm not screening calls, so folks, if you want me, I'm here and I understand that everyone, you know, sitting on the council has the same attitude. Now, currently, our city is on as firm a financial foundation as it's been, as it's been in many years. The years I've been following city government, I don't think we've been in any better position. Our reserves are as they should be, they're strong enough to weather a natural disaster or an unexpected downturn in tax collections. This stable position comes from many years of the city council making wise decisions on proper budgeting and wise spending. The council member, council member Vance Williamson has been and continues to chair the finance committee and I want to thank Vance and the council for their hard work in keeping us in a firm financial position. Now, having recognized the fact that we as a city are financially stable does not alleviate the fact that we as a city are looking at some serious issues. We're facing the same issues that you as families are. Inflation chews away at your finances, your personal budget, and it does the same thing to your city's finances. We have started working on our streets. We've been able to resurface several to date this year. We still have the bulk of five million dollars that was allocated from the works funding for repair and overlay. We started and we know that we're only going to be able to do about eighty percent of the work that we originally thought we would be able to complete, and this is strictly due to inflation. We have over three dozen different streets already targeted, spread out over all four wards, and the design was to equally share these resources. We'll finish up what was started in the southern part of Ward One. We did about a half dozen streets before the asphalt plant went down and we will be moving south into the third ward following. Now, the real elephant in the room is our wastewater treatment plants. There's no secret that they are almost four decades old. They were only designed to last between twenty and twenty-five years. We are at a point where we need to act. I know we do not have the amount of cash on hand to do what needs to be done. So we have been looking and working to find federal grants or aid wherever we can and will continue to do what we need to take care of your needs. We have submitted a request to Senator Bozeman's office to date and I shared it this week with a member of Mr. Weston's, Congressman Weston's staff. We're going to do all we can to find the money to make this project work. Now, I knew as I took office there would be a learning curve and I'm climbing it. My four years as a council member have proven to be of value, not only to be aware of what we're faced with, but to make sure I better understand my position in city government. As we go forward, I see our city poised for growth and prosperity, but it's going to take hard work to get there and I know we are capable of making it happen and we will need you, the citizens of this community, involved. I look at what was achieved in this year alone, one of which was hosting the governor's conference on tourism right here in El Dorado, Arkansas for the first time. And all of the efforts taken to prepare for it, we had so many take part in this effort. Not only the planning committee, but we also had local volunteers from many organizations. I know that I'll forget somebody, there's just no way I could get this list in total. But organizations, cities keep El Dorado beautiful. There were local churches involved, the One City Movement was involved, a young couple started that last year and they're continuing to work with us. We had, we had three of the fire trucks, five, three of our stations responded and showed up to help pick up litter and clean up the city. And then there were just individuals that reached out and said, hey, I'm going down this street, I've got it covered. I'm encouraged to see the sheer number of people that showed up on one day and as best I can count, there were well over two hundred people involved in one day's activity. I see, and aside from my statement, I see Ms. Van Hook in the crowd tonight and she is part and parcel of KEB and Dan Roble with Clean Harbors, great supporter of that organization as well. So, you know, what's important to know is that we have many people in this town that know how important it is to put your best foot forward. And I appreciate the attitude, this attitude, and that's just part of the culture of El Dorado. And I'm going to pause right here, I received a letter a couple of days ago, I handed it to our city clerk Heather McVeigh and it's posted on our, on our Facebook page. Comes from Hot Springs, it's the group Visit Hot Springs there, you know, they are in the tourism business for Hot Springs. And it's sent to me, but I believe in my heart of hearts, it's sent to all of us in this community. So it's just a couple of short paragraphs. It said, "Dear Mayor Cho, I am writing to congratulate you and your team in El Dorado on the great job that you did in hosting the recent governor's conference on tourism. It was a fantastic event from start to finish. As an attendee of many past governor's conferences, I cannot think of a better one than the one your community just hosted. Everything, including the weather, was first-class and El Dorado shined. I have already told my wife that we're going to spend a weekend in El Dorado sometime soon so I can show her all that your town has to offer. Again, thank you for your great hospitality. Please pass on my compliments to all of your citizens that were involved in the conference. They truly stood El Dorado proud. Sincerely, Steve Arison, Chief Executive Officer." As we move forward, there's much to do. The El Dorado Works Board approved the project to provide Wi-Fi in the city parks. If you haven't been by the municipal auditorium, that parking lot that was so muddy last winter, or early this winter, is now fully paved. We got that done before, before the asphalt plant shut down as well. The equipment has been placed, for the Wi-Fi in the city parks, the equipment's been placed on order. It's going to take some time because we got several parks to work in. My hope is to have this project completed by the end of summer. On other notes, by the end of February, our accounts payables were current and all collections were posted and both of those offices are working their daily mail as it arrives. I have also visited with our accountants and they will soon be ready to publish the year-end 2022 financial statement. As I close, I would be remiss not to thank all the citizens who have offered to be in service, all those that served on our city's boards, commissions, and committees. Without you, we in city government would have a very difficult time meeting our obligation to, to our citizens. Their input is invaluable. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your service and your commitment to be our, pardon me, your service and your commitment to our community, to making it a better place to live and work. Ladies and gentlemen, it's been a great start to what I hope to be a great year. As we go forward, we need you to continue to make these meetings and we, when I say we need your input, we definitely need your input. I have had many people approach me to host the governor's conference and I've heard nothing but positive statements, man. You know, if we can, if we can do it for one event, we should be able to do it every time. time. I am honored by your presence tonight, and I'm very, very thankful for all those people that make El Dorado the community it is, and I pray that God continues to spread his blessing over our city. Thank you. I'm done.
I'd like to offer a word of thanks to Ms. Hammond and Ms. Brumley for what they did, they were the centerpins for that whole, that whole tourism deal, and I think they did an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Can I just mention one more thing? You know, next year, we're going to have the eclipse, I think we missing a great opportunity, because it's actually going to come back through our part of the state, and, and we got an opportunity, people going to come through all over the world to see this and witness this. I think we need to get somebody to try to capitalize on the money that we, that, we had a, at the ministry, a lady got up and said it was millions, possibly even billions of dollars to be spent during that eclipse, and we got a, things will happen in April around of twenty twenty-four. I just think, you know, we need to kind of push that, because we need to partner with other cities, people going to get hotels, and they are willing to travel and spend in our city, and we need to have events, and so we can draw people to come, not only that one time, but maybe come back when that says the government and everything. That would be a great thing to try to push for them next year, so we can maybe help our revenue on getting a little extra cash flow through, through here. I'm just throwing that out there. Also, I just want to mention, I hope we have a chance to sit down with Mr. Choob and talk about the diversity training. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else to come before this body, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here.